Good evening. Happy New Year. Welcome back. Great to see everyone. The video of this meeting is streamed on YouTube and will also be available on Facebook and the Village website. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Clerk Saladino to call the roll.
Trustee Augustine.
Here.
Trustee Gale.
Here.
Trustee McGee. Trustee O'Brien.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
President Kukler.
Here. And we have a full constituency consortium or at least a full board. So that's wonderful. At this time, I'd invite you to stand and ask Clerk Saladino to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, a country, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a great way to start out the new year, and that's with an oath of office for Brandon Ochoa. Brandon's joined by several members of his family and friends, including Maritza, his girlfriend, his dad Tobias, and his mom Xandra. So I would welcome who's ever coming up with Brandon for the swearing in to come up towards the camera. And again, it'll be on Facebook and YouTube, so make sure that you have everybody at home click on. First, let me just introduce Brandon. On January 2nd, 2025, the LaGrange Board of Fire and Police Commissioners approved the appointment of Brandon Ochoa to the position of probationary police officer to fill an existing vacancy. Brandon has completed college coursework at the Indiana State University and the College of Lake County. He has over four years of law enforcement experience, serving as a police officer for the Metro Police Department and the Roselle Police Department. Brandon will soon start the first phase of his field training with a specially trained LaGrange Field Training Officer. I understand again that, and I'm missing two of the names, so I apologize, but we have mom, dad, girlfriend, and two other supporters we're going with. And I'd like Clerk Saladino to do the swearing in. Oath of office.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brandon Ochoa.
I, Brandon Ochoa.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of police officer.
To the office of police officer.
In the village of LaGrange.
In the village of LaGrange.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of police officer.
The duties of the office of police officers.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome. We're going to have the putting on ceremony as we speak. Continuing on with the hiring, the Village is happy to share that a new part-time property officer has joined the Village team. Joe Mana is a retired police sergeant from Westchester Police Department with 28 years of law enforcement experience. He brings a wealth of patrol investigative and management experience to the role in addition to prior experience as an evidence technician. I'd also like to welcome Joe and congratulate him on his appointment. Administrative hearings. This week on Thursday, the Village will hold its first administrative hearing. The effort of establishing an adjudication process was taken on in collaboration with our neighbor LaGrange Park and as part of our intergovernmental agreement. The partnership will allow for cost sharing for the services of an adjudicator, a caseload that is sufficient for regularly held administrative hearings, and additional cost sharing. It will allow the Village to pursue local vehicle and ordinance violations, offering an approved alternative for both the Village and violators in resolving these matters. It also addresses one of the Village's 2024 to 2027 strategic priorities. Moving on, the Community Diversity Group has announced that they are co-sponsoring the fifth annual Building Inclusive Community Conference at Lyons Township High School, the South Campus in Western Springs. It's going to be held on February 8th. Doors open at 8:30. That's again Saturday, February 8th, and everyone is invited to join in the conference for an energetic opening speaker, dance, stepper performance. The conference begins at 9:00 and, well, doors open 8:30. Conference begins at 9:00 with workshops held at 10:15 and 11:30, and a free pizza lunch sponsored by Compass Mothers Realty Group. Keep an eye out for the workshop registration link that will be circulated soon. I'm sure will be on our webpage. I.DOT. One of the items on tonight's agenda is for additional sewer lining work related to the Brainerd and Shawmet construction projects. During work on this project, it was discovered that additional sewer lining work was needed. Through the work with the West Central Council of Mayors, the Village asked for and received additional funds to complete this work at a very favorable 20% cost to the Village and 80% I.DOT match. The Village is always pleased to make good use of federal funds and is thankful to the West Central Council and I.DOT for their help and partnership in making these improvements. Lastly, our next Village Board meeting will be in two weeks and will be held on January 27th, 2025. So at this time, I'd ask Manager Knight to provide a manager's report.
Sure. Thank you, President Kukler, and good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to welcome Officers Ochoa and Mana. We're pleased to have them as part of our team. Just a few operational notes to highlight this evening. First of all, the sewer lining plan from Brainerd and Shawmet was delayed as the contractor worked through some details on sewer sizes in this area. Those issues have been resolved and the contractors working to reschedule the week, looking to be the week of the 20th, January 20th. This time of year is optimal for trimming of certain trees that make up the Village's tree canopy. Given that, the Village's contracted tree service, D. Ryan, will be trimming trees in the southwest region of the Village with Public Works crews trimming trees that are four inches to nine inches in diameter. Lastly, ComEd continues their work on upgrading their grid through the addition of a transmission line. Crews are currently potholing to determine boring depths for Phase Two of this work, which is taking place along Bella Avenue, Kensington, and Brewster. Village staff continues to work with our partners, ComEd, to ensure that the construction and the later restoration work is done according to Village standards. President Kukler, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Village Manager Knight. At this time, I'd ask Village Clerk Saladino to read the items under consent agenda, followed by those items appearing under current business.
Matters on the consent agenda will be considered by a single motion and vote because they already have been considered fully by the Board at a previous meeting or have been determined to be of a routine nature. Any member of the Board of Trustees may request that an item be moved from the consent agenda to current business for separate consideration. Item A, a resolution approving a bill of sale for the acceptance of public infrastructure improvements related to the Mason Point Plan Development at 441 Ninth Avenue. Item B, a resolution authorizing the execution of a service order for telephone and internet services with First Communications LLC. Item C, in ordinance authorizing the disposal of Village property. Item D, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2025 Ford Explorer from Currie Motors. Item E, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2025 Ford F-250 four-by-four pickup truck from Sutton Ford. I just want to make a note that originally it was listed as a four-by-two pickup, but it is indeed a four-by-four. Item F, minutes of the Village of LaGrange Board of Trustees meeting Monday, December 9th, 2024. Item G, December 23rd, 2024 consolidated voucher. And item H, January 13th, 2025 consolidated voucher. Under current business, this agenda item includes consideration of matters being presented to the Board of Trustees for action. Item A, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for the Brainerd and Shawmet Avenue Resurfacing Project. Item B, a resolution approving an agreement, Local Public Agency Amendment 1, with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the Brainerd and Shawmet Avenue Resurfacing Project. Item C, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of LaGrange and the Village of Western Springs for the Gilbert Avenue Resurfacing Project. Item D, in ordinance granting a zoning variation from the minimum required corner side yard at 449 South Stone Avenue. And item E, in ordinance approving a special use permit, site plan and design review permit to authorize coworking in conjunction with retail sales in the C-1 district at 30th South LaGrange Road.
Thank you, Clerk Saladino. At this time, I would ask if there's any public comment on matters on tonight's agenda. Please, please state your name. The mic may not be on.
I suppose the first one has to turn around. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. I'll be sure to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hurne.
Sure. I am here to talk a bit about the item that relates to the special use permit for the coworking and retail space at 30th South LaGrange Road. And to give you a little bit of background, my husband and I, Tim, have been residents of LaGrange for 30-plus years. We raised our sons here. We've had businesses in LaGrange from both a restaurant to a decorative art studio to an online cookie company. So we're familiar with the vitality of the community, if you will, and certainly the zoning and the rules that go along with that. In 2014, 10 years ago, I founded Sweet Spot. And Sweet Spot is a coworking business located at 21 South LaGrange Road, second floor, Suite 200. My husband and I own the space that Sweet Spot leases from us. So we have a similar situation where we do own the property as well as run the business as a separate entity. When we opened the business, our doors in December 2014, Sweet Spot was the first coworking business in the near west suburbs. So we had to invest a great deal into educating the community in building the demand, if you will, for coworking and helping people understand the benefits of it. So a great deal of investment to that. Our ability, when pandemic came, to survive that period of time, even though we lost about 50% of our revenue, was because we had educated our people, had a strong community within Sweet Spot of members and users who did not want to see us in a situation where we would close our doors. We've made changes to the business model. We've adjusted to the change in the workforce, the remote workforce, to hybrid models. And our solid reputation has made us a business that continues to thrive. In 2021, when Brick and Mortar had submitted their first special use application at 3430 South LaGrange Road, Sweet Spot was the only coworking business in LaGrange. The demand for coworking was slowly recovering from the pandemic, but it was moving in a positive direction. I was at the Plan Commission meeting for that special use permit, and I supported it. And I supported it because Sweet Spot was the only working business in town, and I believed that we could certainly have the demand for an additional coworking space. Although Brick and Mortar didn't proceed with building the business, two additional coworking businesses did come to town, and they opened in LaGrange since 2021. Now, remote coworking is on the rise, but it's not something that is just, you know, you can't just look at it as something that's just going to continue to grow and to grow. There are limitations to the particular market that you're in. About 45% of coworking in the suburbs is related to the suburbs. So the growth in coworking is 45% suburban, and it also is based on a couple of other factors, proximity and density. And in our particular market, we have, from a proximity standpoint, typically people come for coworking, look for coworking spaces because they're interested in not commuting into the city like they've done in the past. They want to save that time. So they certainly don't want to commute very far to a coworking space either. And in doing that, typically, we're looking at about the market radius being three miles. We have at Sweet Spot, if I take a cross-section of our memberships and users, we're looking at residents of LaGrange, LaGrange Park, and Western Springs. In addition to that, when you look at density, we happen to be in a community, fortunately, that has large homes and substantial income level. Along with that, how that impacts the coworking market is the fact that people can have spaces within their homes that are private for them to be able to work productively. So what this does is that it really makes our major competitor the work-at-home person. So what we try to do is ensure that the proximity and the density aligns with the services we're offering and what we're trying to achieve. And I think that that's something that LaGrange has to take a serious look at, is to ensure that we aren't, instead of providing, thinking we're providing public benefit, we are in fact saturating the market. If the proposal that Brick and Mortar had brought, truly brought in a new service to the community, then I don't think there would be any issue. The issue I have is that the three coworking businesses in the community, which has raised our coworking five times what it was, working capacity, five times what it was in 2021, each of them provide the same service, including Sweet Spot, as Brick and Mortar are proposing. For me, that does not seem to warrant an approval to change the use of the property to allow for a first floor and reduce the retail space opportunity as well as tax revenue by 89%. So I look to you to give serious consideration as to whether this is truly in line with the approval process that the Village goes through to review who is within the community, who is doing the right businesses that will actually benefit the community. And I hope that you'll give serious consideration to whether or not this is the right move to make at this time. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurne. Seeing no other comments, I would proceed to the consent agenda. What? We do have somebody. Okay. Don't fall.
Hi. My name is Tia Manalakis. I'm a resident at 424 South Stone Avenue. And I am, I'm here regarding the zoning ordinance, zoning variance for 449 South Stone Avenue. I'm not sure if you got my statement letter and proposed plan. Oh, great. Thanks. Oh, you know, great job on the Village because I got it to them right at 5:00. And they were so helpful, really. I have to give them a shout out because they did such a great job. But I'm here because I have some concerns with the owner's presented plan. I feel that he really has, they really have not investigated or really thought about long-term what their needs are or, you know, how things could, how they could do it a little bit easier and a little bit more fiscally responsible for, not that that's anything for the Board to decide, but I think it'd be better for them. I don't think the owner has seen it. Have they? No. Sorry. I also wanted to just go over, and I have another neighbor. I wanted to go over the eight, the eight standards they have to meet, and I really don't think they have met them. And I don't know if anyone had a chance to read it, but I'm just going to go really quick. So number one is that they have to meet all standards, which I don't think they do. Number two is their unique physical condition. I don't really think they have a unique physical condition. Actually, I think they have a unique exception because they have an oversized lot. They have, there are 71 homes along 47th, and 41 of them actually have driveways off 47th. So that's pretty common because over half of them have driveways off 47th. So there's nothing unique about their thing, about their land. And as I show in my Exhibit A, they could do, just adding a concrete pad adjacent to their garage for a turnaround, they could meet all the zoning ordinances. Number three, not self-created. Well, it's not self-created. The home was built in 1938. So, but they did buy the house and they did look at it. So they should know what they bought into. They bought into a home that had a very small side yard to the north and was on a busy street. Number four, denied substantial rights. They aren't denied any rights. They have a two-car garage. They did nothing to remedy that two-car garage, like lowering their six-foot fence at minimum so they could see. And they haven't really done anything to improve it, to make their life a little easier. Number five, not merely special privilege. Well, it's not a special privilege. They claim that their safety is, they are in danger as they exit on 47th, but if they put their driveway on Stone Avenue, I really feel that they're just trading off different dangers. And I think that maybe the driveway on Stone Avenue with the garage, the detached garage in the front yard would cause more problems. The code and plan purposes, number six. Well, it's to protect the taxable value of the land. I don't feel that a detached front, a detached garage in the front yard will add value to the house. I think it'll diminish it. B, the proposed plan does not encourage or enhance the preservation of the natural resources and aesthetic amenities. I think just by adding a pad, less permeable space, I think it's just a better way to go. And C, the proposed plan does not promote or protect public health and safety. Like I said, I think if they put that garage on Stone Avenue with the curb cut, they are just creating more hassles and more, and even more risk to the community and themselves. Number seven, essential character of area. We don't have that character in LaGrange where we have a detached garage in the front yard. We are, the house, the property is located in the historic district, and we have a certain character, and I'd like to maintain that. And the character of that is if that garage isn't attached to the home, like new homes are, then that garage should be detached in the back corner. And no other remedy. Well, Exhibit A does pose a remedy. So with that being said, I will let Jan take the floor, but I also wanted to comment, before Jan takes the floor, on the visual. The, I don't know if you guys saw this, but I'm a little confused, and I'd like the Village engineer to, this is not typically what I see as visual clearance. I don't know what this is for. Is this is just cars are going straight? Is this, if the car is going to turn right? There's certain standards, and it wasn't clear to me what standards he was following here. But I do have a video, if any of you are interested, on my phone, where I am driving down 47th, and it just so happened that a person was walking, and from this area right here to get here, it's just a little, it's about three seconds at 30 miles per hour. So it comes quick, and that garage and the trees, the trees are a big deal. They get in the way too. I mean, we love our trees. I love our trees, but they do impede visual, you know, they are visual barriers. So I will let Jan take the floor.
But before you sit down, can you just tell me where you live and proximity to this property?
So I live in the middle block of South Stone Avenue on the opposite side of the home. And he is correct. It is difficult, very difficult to back out of 47th or front.
You just got to speak into the microphone so the people at home can hear you.
It is difficult to back out of 47th. That is true. But it's also difficult to, I mean, so it's also, if you pull out of 47th forward on his driveway, which he does, then it is just as difficult as if you're pulling out at 47th at the intersection of Stone and 47th. It's not great. The fenced, the current fence is actually impedes the, it is a visual barrier, and it's just not great. And if you put a curb cut there, A, he still has to, you know, maneuver around to get to 47th, and the people making a right on 47th, and Jan lives right next to him, so she can comment on that, they make that turn really fast. I don't know why, but Stone, well, I do know why. Stone Avenue is a high-speed street. People are speeding to get their kids to high school and speeding to get to the train. And it always has been like that. So it is a pretty dangerous street with, you know, and the first stop sign is at Maple. So I will let Jan speak.
Thank you.
Okay. Do the microphone up a little bit.
I think it's working.
Okay. Great. So I'm Jan Hamblin. I also live on the 400 block of Stone. As a matter of fact, I live next door to the subject property. First, I want to state that, you know, in looking at the application, since 2010, there have been four requests for variances for corner setbacks. And so clearly, a variance in this situation is a rare and extraordinary measure that I feel has to be very carefully considered. And in looking at the code, the reason for these ordinances, setbacks, et cetera, one of them is it is to establish and regulate lines for public safety. And Tia did allude to some of the concerns that not only she and I have, but frankly... And, and Tia did allude to some of the concerns that not only she and I have, but, but frankly, many of the people in the 400 block of Stone. In order to, to obtain a variance, it, it requires the homeowner to prove with facts and reasons that support each of the standards. Now, Tia went through those standards. I do not feel that the homeowner has, has done that. Instead, I feel like this is an emotional argument, that 47th Street is unsafe. While I, while I agree, everyone deserves to be safe. I'm not saying that my neighbor doesn't deserve to be safe, that his family doesn't deserve to be safe. But it's not just him. It's, it's, it's me and my family. It's my other neighbors on the 400 block of Stone. It's people who use the stone and turn off a stone onto 47th or off of 47th onto Stone. One thing that hasn't really been discussed in any of the application materials or the reports I've seen is the fact that there is a park right across the street from this house. A park that's very heavily used with, for children and family and soccer games. People are, oh, you know, while there is an intersection at Brainerd and, and 47th that has a stoplight, for the most part, when people go to that park, they're not going down to the light. They're crossing there. And I, I have serious concerns that putting a structure of this size is going to impede sightlines for people going to and from that park, in addition to people trying to turn again on and off of 47th Street. So, in looking at the, the four cases that have been brought since 2010, one of them was withdrawn, and it's in the report. Looking at the other three, I looked, I, no, I haven't driven past the house. I, you know, and again, it's not my case to prove, it's the homeowner's case, but none of them were on this, in this unique situation where it is on a busy street. And so, I, we do need to be concerned with what that means to this variance request. There was, and, and none of them have asked for a variance with this size structure or frankly, this far of an encroachment into the 17-yard, 17-foot setback. The largest one was 9.83, and I'm looking at the picture, I can't even figure out what it was, to be honest with you. But, I digress. So, again, looking at these, these standards, which Tia also went over, again, I just feel like every reason is, is that a drive-in garage on 47th is unsafe. And yet, there's 41 other driveways on corner lots on 47th. This is not unique to this property. And as I said before, if there's anything unique is the fact that it is on a busy street with a park across the street, and there's a busy intersection a block away, which certainly, I think, would add to the safety concerns of putting a structure that size so close to 47th Street. And keep in mind too, that the parkway itself is very narrow. I mean, the trees barely like fit in the parkway where it is. So, all these factors speak against why this variance shouldn't be granted. And I've lived in this house since September of 1995. During that time, this is the fourth homeowner. No one else has brought this up where it's unsafe and I therefore need a variance. As a matter of fact, all these people had children. The homeowners that lived there when I first moved there had, at the time, I believe, college age children. These children grew up in that house, and nothing has changed. 47th Street, no, no, I, I mean, since I've lived there, I don't think 47th Street has become busier. Certainly since the homeowner bought the house, 47th Street hasn't become busier. I mean, they, they knew when they bought the house that this was an issue. So, to me, this is really asking for a, a special privilege for, for something that can be remedied in another way. In looking at, I mean, I, I've walked past this property many times since walking my dog or walking to the park. There's a six-foot fence that comes up to the edge of the driveway and the sidewalk. Certainly, that could be remedied. That fence could be lowered. That, that does impede the view. There's a big tree at the end of the driveway, could that tree be cut back? I'm not advocating cutting a tree down, but if that's something that could be done, that could alleviate the concern. As Tia brought up, you could put a turnaround pad. I mean, there are, there are other remedies. I mean, the, the, to grant a variance, it requires no other remedies, and there certainly are plenty of other remedies here. And with respect to the, the driveway right off of 47th Street, my driveway is probably 85 feet off of 47th Street. I can tell you that whenever I'm backing out of my driveway, I have to stop at the end to make sure someone's not whipping around the corner, and I've almost been hit a number of times. So, I think putting a driveway 30 to 40 feet closer to 47th Street is not going to solve the issue. So, again, I just, I, I don't feel that the homeowner has met the requirements for each of the standards to grant this variance. And I do think it will endanger other people who are coming in and out of that intersection and going to the park.
Thank you. Please.
Hello? Excuse me. Hello, I'm Stephen Specht. I'm the property owner of 449 South Stone. I thank you to Jan and Tia. I appreciate your passion and concern for the neighborhood. I, I think that is a great thing about the village, that I, I love that we can have this platform, that we can talk about this issue. I, I, I think that's, that being said, when my wife and I moved into the property, not that long after one of our neighbors across the street had a car come and hit their house, and not, not the, the greatest intro to the neighborhood. And when we bought the property, we never actually pulled into the driveway. We were always parked out on Stone, and, and to be honest, the, the concern didn't really hit us until the first time I did try to back out, and I, I probably mouthed a few expletives and realized, like, I can never back out of the driveway. So, every time we throw our flashers on and wait and hope that nobody hits us, and then we back into the driveway so we can actually pull out, just because, as, as been mentioned, the trees block a lot of the visibility if we're trying to back out of the driveway. So, so that's the reason we submitted the variance request, because we want to see, is this a possibility? I'm not going to go to Menards tomorrow and get all the lumber and build a garage if this is granted. I still have to go through building permits. I still have to probably discuss with builders and architects, and there are a lot of other things that need to happen beyond just the, the sketch that I put together to at least get an understanding of the, the distance off the property line. And that being said, I, I put together several sketches and talked with my wife about a pad or a U-shaped driveway going around the tree that's by our driveway as well. And, and the number one thing I kept going back to is we're currently at 42% perme, impermeable, impermeable surface at our property. So, we're, we're already very high, and any additional concrete would put us over 50%, which wouldn't be allowed by the village. And quite frankly, it wouldn't be a very good decision for the village to allow me to just put more concrete, just because it, I, I know it's a, a pretty significant issue in the village to deal with floodwaters. So, that being said, the proposal that I put together, which eliminates the existing garage and eliminates the existing driveway and has a much shorter driveway, reduces the amount of impermeable surface on my property. So, I, I do believe it's a net positive, whereas the, the concrete pad option, while it would, it would work, it wouldn't work to the, the effect that it adds all this impermeable surface to the property. So, there are a number of other factors that I felt needed to be considered, which is why we ultimately arrived at this driveway off Stone as being what we felt was the best option. I, I certainly would never want to build anything, create a new unsafe condition, and I had talked with, I, I spoke with charity about the sightlines and my research and in what the building engineer put together. The garage location does not affect the sightlines, and certainly, I think there's more calculations that can and should be done, especially if we get to a, a building permit step. But at least the initial review has negated the impact of sightline obstructions with the proposed garage location. So, I think for, for these factors, I, I don't believe that it's creating a new unsafe condition, and certainly, the building permit review process would have to root all of that out. Again, this doesn't mean that I'm going to go build a garage tomorrow because the building department might shoot it down for a number of reasons that are yet to be determined. I think the only thing we're, we're trying to decide today is, can I encroach that 17-foot setback or not? And again, you might tell me, I can't build the garage for a whole host of other reasons upon submitting a building permit, and, and that would be determined later. But I, I do feel the, the question today is if that 17-foot setback can be encroached on. So...
That was, thank you for coming out. Welcome to La Grange. One question for you, and then are you aware, because of when we just passed our comprehensive plan, that your request has to have five votes?
I was not aware, but thank you.
Okay. I don't, you probably should have made aware. I'm not sure if there's any alternatives, as if you didn't want to have it heard, in, I guess we'd have to go to council as far as when it could be heard under a less demanding standard.
So, it is, it is six months from the date of the adoption of the comprehensive plan is when it would revert back to the old...
And would that require four votes then?
It would require four.
And is there a time limit about when the person can bring something after the plan commission? I'm asking all trick questions, but...
I don't know, but these are good questions.
So, and I don't, if, if this doesn't matter, if you, if you want to go forward today regardless, we'll just go forward.
That's fine.
You, you ready to go forward?
Yeah.
Then don't, don't know you're going to look. Perfect. I just wanted you to be aware.
Thank you.
Yep. One more, or at least one more?
I'd like to interject in this because I know what he's going through with living on Stone Avenue. Come over to East Avenue. You haven't seen nothing yet. Okay. I think if I was you, my suggestion would be to put permeable pavers in, ask for a variance, to go with a turnaround in the backyard, and do that route, and take the fence down. And I know the guy that put the fence up, and I worked in that house 40 years ago. But it's a dangerous spot, and I agree with you. It's like you're playing Russian roulette trying to get out. So, they got to cut you a little slack on being able to get out, you know? So, a turnaround would be appropriate. And if I was you, I'd just forget the deal because you ain't going to get it.
Moving along. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda in a second.
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale and Trustee O'Brien. Any comments?
Just like to say, as previously stated, I recuse myself from voting on any agenda items related to the village prosecutor.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Any other comments? Seeing none. Sorry. I thought you were done.
Is this, any comments regarding consent agenda?
Please.
Okay. I just didn't want to jump in front of anyone else if anyone had anything to say.
No, you're, you're...
Okay, great. I had one question, kind of a multi-part question about Agenda Item B, with our resolution authorizing the execution of a service order agreement with First Communications LLC for telephone internet service. In reading a bit on that through our agenda packet, I noticed that in approving this, we'd be waiving the request for competitive bidding, and it seems to me like there's a lot of companies in this space, and I'm just wondering, you know, since it looks like our costs are going up $200 a month for the services plus an additional $8,000 for implementation to have backup for, you know, should our systems go down, which we definitely don't want. But, you know, is there an organization out there who might be willing to do this work for less? We won't know unless we seek that alternative bid, and I don't see an itemized list for the services that AIS would perform that are adding up to 8,000. So, I'm just curious what we're paying for and if there's, if there's any alternatives to doing it this way.
Do you want to remove this off the consent agenda so we can discuss it in detail, or...
I mean, if, if...
Well, Jack will answer questions. Again, I'm sorry, what? Okay. Because, again, if we're going to have an in-depth conversation, it really won't go under the consent, it would just go under new business. But Jack might be able to answer your concerns.
Sure. I'll do, I'll do my best to provide some background, and we can see if we want to have some further conversation. So, one of the things that was obtained as part of this process was another quote, so I apologize for that not being the background materials. It was obtained, we did work with a consultant in this space to try to find what solutions were available to the village. One thing to note is that through this arrangement, we are also providing for backup internet services, which we don't have under the current contract. So, we were able to negotiate that additional service through this process of renewing the agreement and, and get that additional service, which is at a far reduced cost than if we were to go out separately for it. So, that would be that piece. As far as AIS goes, they provided us a quote based on what they know at this moment to configure the service. The service would have to be installed, and then they would know kind of what they had to do precisely for that. So, it could be below 8,000 as well. It was just a ballpark figure to give us a sense of what it would cost.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with keeping it on, not going into debate about it any further unless anyone else wants to. But I would like to see, you know, more information when things like this comes through, especially on consent, so that we know we're, we're doing our best. I know it takes more time, and I really trust the staff evaluating some of these things, but I do think the bidding process is important right now, being that everything is, you know, going up in costs, or many things are.
Thank you. Seeing no other trustee comments, I would ask Clerk Saladino for a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Moving on to current business, first item is Item A, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for Brainerd and Shawmut, and I believe that's going to Trustee McGee.
Thank you, President Kukler. A resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for the Brainerd and Shawmut Avenue resurfacing project. On March 18th, 2024, the Village Board approved a resolution for improvement to allocate motor fuel tax funds for the engineering and construction costs associated with resurfacing, sewer lining, and other improvements on Brainerd and Shawmut Avenues. During the conduct of the work, it was discovered that there was additional need for sewer lining beyond what had been originally identified. Through the West Central Council of Mayors, the village succeeded in its request to obtain additional funding through the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, to perform the additional sewer lining work. Financing for the project is contingent on providing a local match, which is estimated to be $90,000, or the total project cost of $450,000. Access of the Illinois Department of Transportation's resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code is required for the village to participate in the project. Additional sewer lining needs were unanticipated and unbudgeted. However, funds exist within the fiscal year 2024, 2025, capital project funds to pay for the additional expense. I recommend, I move and recommend approval for the proposed resolution for the improvement under the Illinois Highway Code.
Thank you, Trustee McGee. I'm sorry, who got the second?
I'll second.
Trustee Gale, thank you. Any comments, questions on this matter? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item B is very similar and related. It's a resolution approving an agreement for Local Public Agency Amendment I with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the Brainerd and Shawmut Avenue Resurfacing Projects. Since it's a related item, I'd like to forego the complete introduction and just ask if a trustee was willing to make that motion and second at this time.
I motion for the approval of the proposed resolution.
Thank you, Trustee McGee. And Trustee O'Brien, thank you for the second. Any discussion under B? Seeing none, I'd ask Clerk Saladino for a roll call vote.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Next up is a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of La Grange and the Village of Western Springs for the Gilbert Avenue Resurfacing Project. And I'll keep that one to give some information for the people at home. In March of 2023, the Village of Western Springs submitted a grant application to the 2023 Cook County Invest in Cook Program, seeking funding for Phase II engineering of the Gilbert Avenue Resurfacing Project. It is for Gilbert Avenue from Ogden to 47th Street. The county informed Western Springs that the project was selected to receive the $55,000 in funding, which is approximately 50% of Phase II engineering costs. The grant requirements include a requirement that Western Springs enter into an intergovernmental agreement with La Grange to receive the funds. The remaining portion of the cost, approximately $55,000, had to be paid through local match as the village shares the jurisdiction of Gilbert Avenue with, well, excuse me, with Western Springs. The costs associated with the local match requirement for this project are proposed to be split equally between the two communities. Western Springs is the lead agency on the project and will enter into the agreement with a consultant engineer for Phase II engineering. Western Springs in turn will seek reimbursement from the program and the village. The cost breakdown again is Invest in Illinois, $55,000, La Grange, 25%, $27,500, and Village of Western Springs, $27,500. With that, I would ask for a motion to enter into the intergovernmental agreement.
I move for entering into the intergovernmental affairs agreement.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale and Trustee Peterson. Any questions regarding this matter? Seeing none, I would ask Clerk Saladino for a roll call vote.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Thank you, and that passes unanimously. Moving on to item D, it's the ordinance granting a zoning variation from the minimum required corner side yard at 449 South Stone. I would ask trustee Thompson to introduce this matter.
Thank you, President Kukler. Stephen Speck, the applicant, is the owner of the property of 449 South Stone Avenue. It's applied for a variation from the required minimum corner side yard to construct a detached garage. Zoning code 14-303E1, paragraph A allows the reduction of the dimensions of any required yard if the standard for variations are met. The subject property currently has a detached garage located near the northeastern corner of the property with a driveway that extends south to 47th Street. The proposal includes relocating the existing garage and driveway. The garage is proposed to be located south of the principal structure, six feet from the corner side lot line, encroaching into the 17-foot required corner side yard by 11 feet. The proposed new driveway will exit onto Stone Avenue, as and as proposed complies with the zoning code and is a standard village right-of-way requirement. On November 21, 2024, the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on the application. The applicant testified about the safety concerns with the garage's current access onto 47th Street, and how the proposed design was intended to maximize open space and minimize impact on existing trees. One neighbor spoke against the application citing concerns of sightlines and community character. While in the ZBA meeting, the village engineer conducted a clear site analysis and confirmed the proposed garage complies with the village's requirement and would not impede the sightlines. However, upon review, the village engineer determined that the existing six-foot fence on the property violates the required clear vision triangle. Approximately 23 linear feet of the fence encroachment encroaches in the sightline, and its largest encroachment is 1.5 feet in depth. The applicant has made, been made aware of this violation and the need to remedy, and the need to remedy the encroachment. The ZBA discussed the application and generally agreed that the garage access from Stone rather than 40 South Street was a reasonable request. However, the commission was split on whether the applicant met the standard of no other remedy. Three commissioners noted that the driveway in the garage could be located in the rear of the property, similar to many single-family homes in the R4 district with an exit onto Stone Avenue and comply with the code. Two commissioners felt that the alternative location unduly restricted the applicant's use of the yard area. The ZBA voted three to two to recommend the approval of the proposed variation. Because the application failed to receive a positive vote of four members of the ZBA, the motion recommended approval failed. Due to the ZBA's vote and the recent adoption of the comprehensive plan, a vote of two-thirds of the corporate authorities, five votes is required to approve the variation. Recommended action the Zoning Board of Appeals did not recommend or deny, therefore, no recommendation is being presented to the board. The board finds that the variation is warranted. The staff and the village attorney have prepared the attached ordinance and the request of variation. I would like to make a motion, and I do have some immediate comments after this, but I would like to make a motion to approve this and ask for a second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Thompson, trustee Augustine. With that, we'd open it up for comments. And trustee Thompson, why don't you lead us off?
Thank you, President Kukler. I appreciate this item was actually assigned to me. I am a resident of La Grange at the corner of 47th and Spring, and I live on 47th Street, and I have a driveway that goes out onto 47th Street. It is a very dangerous situation. And I appreciate there are 71 homes in La Grange that face 47th Street, and 41 homes that have no option of a driveway to that. In La Grange, there are three properties, four properties, that could actually have this garage rerouted. There's 449 Stone, there is 500 South Ninth, there is mine, and there is the Historic District. Those are the only homes in this town that could have their driveway rerouted. As I talked to residents that live on 47th Street, any resident that could get their driveway off 47th Street would beg to get it off 47th Street. As Mr. Speck noted, a car did drive through the house across the street. The neighbor that lives at 451 Springs, drive, backyard was driven through last year while his kids were playing. It's a very dangerous situation where you have these houses and these driveways are on 47th Street. We see a lot of accidents on 47th Street. It is a dangerous street. The block view to the east, while the, he does have a fence that borders his driveway, the neighbor behind him has a complete six-foot fence all the way around his house. The one block from his house to the, to the corner of Wayola, there are three trees in the parkway, which is a very rare occurrence. I went, drove through La Grange today. There are about five blocks in La Grange on 47th Street that have three trees in the parkway. One of the trees in the neighbor's parkway is about two feet from the driveway. So even if you eliminate his middle fence, and if he pulls out of his driveway forward or backwards, his view is blocked back to the east by the neighbor's fence, and then by a very mature genko tree that we all have up and down 47th Street. The comments have been made about the safety of the turn. If he puts his driveway in, and we talked about it this weekend, his driveway would be 27 feet from the corner, which is further distance than my neighbor 451, which is 26 and a half feet. His house was rebuilt of a home where they went from a one-car garage to a two-car garage, and his driveway now sits 26 and a half feet from the corner. So very common for cars to turn in that way. It's, it's, and as far as, yeah, his garage would not be attached. It would be close enough to the house. But in the Historic District, there are, there are homes that range from all ages in the Historic District. His next-door neighbors pointed out has an attached garage right next door to him. There's another attached garage in the same block. There's an attached, three attached garages in my block. There's one just across the street right behind him in Wayola. So attached garages in different-looking houses and the way they look in the Historic District is not anything that really disturbs the nature. We've allowed brand-new, modern homes to be built, so there's no real code on how we control that. So to me, to create a much safer operation as far as the park goes, accidents that occur on 47th Street can force cars into the park. This is across the street, but as people weave in and out of traffic, getting an accident off 40th Street, 47th Street, and it occur on Stone was much safer than an accident occurring on 40th Street, 47th Street, or south into Stone. So for me, I think this is a very important improvement. Also, there was a note in the ZBA comments, would this affect the value of the home negatively? I talked to, you know, being the former drop La Grange guy dealing with flooding and real estate issues, I called through my bank of realtors this weekend, and all of them went, they know the property because it has sold a lot. They all said it is a major issue with that home, the driveway. And God, if you could get that driveway off 47th Street, it would not, certainly not hurt the value of the home, if not increase it, because homes on 47th Street are lower valued because of the driveways going onto 47th Street. It's a high-speed, dangerous street. Traffic backs up in the morning time, past Wayola, so his ability to back out of that driveway is almost impossible in the morning or even pull out. Like you said, pulling out on the, from Stone is difficult. I have to do that to enter my driveway. I have to come westbound or eastbound on 47th Street. I can't enter my driveway coming from the, from the east because I have to turn into two lanes of traffic, because then all our driveways are narrow. Same issue we have. So getting these driveways off 47th Street where possible would certainly be the best thing to happen. So I fully support it, and I hope as a board will support it as well.
Thank you, trustee Thompson. Any other comments from trustees? Trustee Gale.
Thanks. I actually had a couple of, a couple of questions for charity of everybody. So first off, the 17-foot setback that this is set at, is that a percentage of the width? Is that every, every side lot on 47th? Like, it just struck me as an odd number. Literally, it's an odd number.
17 feet is the standard corner side yard setback for a corner lot in that zoning district.
Okay, regardless.
It's not a percentage. It's not like the interior side yard where it's five feet or 10%.
Okay. Do you know if there's any, anything special about 17? Like, again, it struck me as odd. Like, you know, I have a, I have a 50-foot wide lot. I have a five-foot, you know, set, that, you know, side, side yard requirement, like, you know, it's 10%. It makes, you know, it sort of logically makes sense. Do you, do you know what, again, 17 struck me as just odd?
It's slightly more than half of the standard front yard setback. So I would, I would think that, I think it's intended to be, and this is my speculation, because I wasn't there when the code was written. I don't know for sure. But my speculation is it's intended to be roughly half of what the, the corner, roughly half of what the front yard setback is.
Okay. And then for the fence, the tree, we talked about that. Like, is that, that's all, do we have to take any action to make sure that's remedied today? Is that going to be remedied because the code requires?
Sure. So the fence being remedied, the violation of the clear sight area, that's a separate code issue. It's not really part and parcel of the variation application. It is an existing non-conforming fence, but as a safety issue, it does, the code does say that the fence would need to be remedied, that that safety issue would need to be remedied.
Okay. So there's no, yeah, there's no, I guess that's a bend question. There's no action we need to take with respect to that. That's a separate, separate violation that will then be remedied.
Correct. That would not be a village board issue. That would be a staff issue to, to address.
Okay. And then just to be clear, the, I mean, we've read it here, but the, and actually, I may have this question for trustee Thompson. I mean, the sightline issue is, that's, that's resolved. Like, there's no, there's no sightline concerns with pulling in and out at that intersection.
So the village engineer evaluated the proposed garage at the, at the requested variation in the location proposed in the ordinance. And his evaluation stated that there is no sightline obstruction for the proposed garage. It did, in that process, identify the obstruction from the existing fence, which will need to be remedied separately.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Those are, those are my questions.
Trustee Peterson.
I have to say, I was, I attended the, the ZBA meeting where this was originally presented. And I have to say, the comment that I heard, a couple of the comments that I heard tonight by the, by the neighbors, I appreciate what I'm hearing, but I also have to disagree with the idea that so much traffic is going on right at Stone Avenue and 47th, because I've been living at 49th and Wayola for 36 years. I've gone up there to that park all the time. And what I'm seeing is the traffic light at 47th Street, or at Brainerd, and people whizzing up and down Stone Avenue. I think the idea that we can slow some traffic down and having a driveway back out onto Stone Avenue is going to slow that down. And it is also, in my opinion, I have to agree, it's going to improve the value of the home and the neighborhood. So while I was very surprised to hear that the homeowner did not back out of his driveway up until, you know, a couple, and after purchase of the house, that was rather surprising. I do think that if we value public safety, which I know everyone up here does, what is being presented is going to be a benefit to the neighborhood for that reason.
I do have a question, and for the applicant, and I can tell you my concern, but maybe if you could go to the microphone. Is the way this garage is going to be built, so on the side of 47th, where the, the public will be looking at a side of a garage, correct? Yeah, that, that.
That's correct.
To me, that, that's, could be unsightly. I think looking at the side of the garage for all the traffic on 47th Street, to me, is problematic.
We have multiple homes on 47th Street that you look at the side of the garage on already. It's a very standard. That's not unusual. You're either looking at garage doors or sides of garage.
Yeah, garage doors are a much different thing.
No, we're looking at sides of garage.
No, I understand what you said.
Yeah, they're, they're all variation of both, so.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, I do think there's a difference between a garage door and a side of a garage. And I understand you said there's other houses that have sides of the garage.
Right.
I would also say it's, as it's my property, I'm very much invested in how it looks. And I agree with you. It's, it's a concern I have. And it's also why, if, if granted, during the building permit process, meeting with builders and architects, that is something that we will want to explore, and making sure that it's, I'm not just going to slap up a cheap garage. I want it to match the house. We've considered adding dormers. We've considered different things to match the house, make it look like it belongs. So there are a lot of architectural changes that could happen throughout that process, without a doubt.
That's great. I'd encourage that. All right. Any other questions, comments? Nope. Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. I've read through this a couple of times. I live on a corner as well. Not on 47th, though. And I drove past the house today, just before the meeting, to double-check what I knew to be. And I really understand the concerns of the neighbors greatly, and I appreciate that they've come to talk about this. I thought I might have had my mind made up coming into this meeting, and I'm a bit on the fence at the moment. So I'm hoping there's still some more discussion, possibly not. As trustee Thompson stated, who has the most experience, he also lives on 47th Street. This is a tricky street. It's, it seems to get busier and busier. And where this homeowner is, is that much closer to the street lights. So they've also got the backup whenever the light's red. They've got a lot of kids passing through with the park and the schools. So it's a, it's a really busy street. So the concerns of all the residents on the street have to be weighted, because we all know what that's like when you add to it. The concern I do have is that the driveway, if put on stone, is still pretty close to the intersection if someone comes around that bend, turns into it. It is also relatively unsafe. And the sightlines with the fences now, that's, that's not ideal. But as I pulled up facing 47th and looked left, I had to pull the nose of my car almost into the street to see around. So it's, it's not great right now for anybody. So I'd want that to be improved. I'm under the impression. I'm under the impression that what is being proposed tonight would improve those sightlines around that left turn especially. But that's a really dangerous street to turn left on. But it would also seem to me whether the car is pulling out of the driveway as it exists now from the front or the back, it's pretty dangerous as well because you're not gonna see kids left or right at all. And so the nose of your car is on the sidewalk. So unless you've got horns and flashing light, you know, you've, you're taking a lot of risk. And I can, I, I, as a, as someone who worries just backing out of my own driveway, um, that, that would be terrifying. So, uh, this is a tricky one. This is, uh, not an easy call to make. Uh, and, and you know, we, uh, we have to hope that the decisions made here tonight are in the best interest, interest of everyone involved, not just the homeowner. But I, I do believe, and it seems to be the opinion of three of the five ZBA commissioners who voted, voted in favor of this, that this proposal is probably on the improvement end of things for all involved. It seems to me a safer alternative for everyone, the kids riding down the sidewalk, the homeowners and the rest, to have this new entrance off of Stone. Don't love the aesthetics either, um, but there are several homes not too far away who have, uh, sides of garages that are a little further set in, but they all have trees and high shrubs and some growth that has, um, made it less of an issue. And it sounds like that's what you would be doing. I also like that this is covering less ground than it would be otherwise. We don't need any more cement on these yards than, than must be. I like that you are trying to save the trees. These things, uh, act as sponges for the water and they are good for the environment. Uh, I am worried though, that there could still be some tall six-foot fence around there and that would be concerning to me. I would love to see in the design phase, if this goes through, that as much as possible weight is given or, uh, design, uh, concepts give to sightlines, aesthetics, uh, and all the other things involved if this were to pass. Because this is really right on the edge. It's not necessary, but I do think it improves the lives of the children in the community and could, and could improve the safety. And there has been some turnover on that property. I looked at it when I was moving into town in 2011 and I didn't want it because the garage was on 47th. So I think that long-term, this is better for that property, but that's not why I would be approving this. It's just, it's a comment. But it does surprise me that one of our most stringent, one of our most conservative commissioners was in favor of this. And even though it may not meet all of the eight variation standards, that doesn't have to be, uh, in the, in this decision-making. But, uh, at this point, I'm feeling in favor of doing this. I would ask that, as you said, it be designed to, to fit in and look as absolutely wonderful as it possibly can, and to match the houses, you said, and even more so, um, anything that you can do to surround it, uh, so that it is not an eyesore in any way, but also do nothing that does anything but make this a safer intersection with the sightlines.
Thank you, trustee Augustine. Trustee Gale.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a, a quick question for the applicant. You can, I mean, it's really quick, but.
You still need to use the microphone for the people at home.
I was gonna have him shout it. Do you know, so on the, on the rendering you did, do you know how far the driveway you've proposed is gonna be? Like I see the garage is gonna be, you know, the garage obviously is where the setback is the issue, but do you know how far the driveway is from the, from the corner? Just roughly, do you have a sense?
I, I don't have it here, but I believe it was about 26 feet off the corner.
Okay.
And, and it would be, there's a tree on that side of Stone, so it would be, um.
You want to get it north of the tree?
Yeah, north of that tree.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thanks, thanks. And then.
Trustee Gale, I measured that off today just to make sure. It's, it's 27 feet from that tree to the corner. So he would at least be 27, 28 feet north of that tree in the parkway.
Okay, okay. Great, thanks, thanks, trustee Thompson. And then I wanted to say, um, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the comments from, from the neighbors, um, especially, you know, coming out and, and sharing your thoughts with us. It's obviously given us a lot to chew on and think about. And I always appreciate when folks go through all the factors too. That's, you know, it's, it's, it's a heavy lift to go through all that. And where I've struggled is whether there's no other remedy here. Um, and I know you saying you're not, you know, the petitioner's saying he's not gonna build it, um, just yet. So I think the, the thing to me is the closer you can get it to the house, the, the, the more you try to preserve the setback, the better. But to me, it seems like this would be, it's an improvement to not have to back out onto 47th versus Stone. It's better for the property. It's what people expect. So I think I'm, I'm generally in favor of, of the variance.
Thank you, trustee Gale. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
And that passes with six votes. So congratulations on that. I do want to thank the neighbors for coming out. I know it's not easy to come out and speak against your neighbors, but it is important. And I appreciate, Steve, you, you recognizing, um, their desires really for the, the best of the neighborhood and nothing personally against you. So thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Moving on to E, an ordinance approving a special use permit, site plan and design review permit to authorize co-working in conjunction with retail sales in the C1 district of 30, at 30 South LaGrange Road. And this is being pushed to trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, President Cookler. Andrew Nass of 30 LaGrange LLC, the applicant, is the owner of property at 30 South LaGrange Road, the subject property, and represents a business called Brick and Mortar. The applicant is requesting a special use permit, site plan approval and design review permit to operate a co-working facility in conjunction with retail sales at 30 South LaGrange Road. In 2021, the applicant applied and was approved for a text amendment, special use permit, site plan approval and design review permit for co-working in conjunction with retail sales at the subject property. When the original application for a special use permit was filed, co-working was the among, was among the various professional office, office uses prohibited within storefront, first-floor spaces in the core of the C1 zoning district. In July 2021, the village approved, uh, O-21-11, an amendment to the zoning code to allow co-working in conjunction with retail sales as a special use in a C1 district, subject to the following conditions. One, the majority of the storefront width must be devoted exclusively to retail sales to a depth within the store of not less than, than an average of 25 feet as measured from the storefront windows. And two, the use must not be located within 600 feet of other co-working facility in conjunction with retail sales fronting on the same street. Following approval, the applicant applied for the building permit, was, which was approved in August of 2022, but the applicant did not proceed to permit issuance. Per section 14-401 and 14-402 of the zoning code, special use permits and site plan approvals expire one, one year following initial approval unless a building permit is, is issued. Construction has begun within that period and is thereafter diligently pursued to completion. The applicant recently submitted new applications to allow for co-working in conjunction with retail sales. The plan commission conducted a public hearing on the application on November 12th, 2024. Two members of the public spoke in opposition to this application citing concerns of the community need for use, for the use inconsistency of proposed special use with the purpose of the C1 district. At the hearing, the commissioners discussed the new proposal and expressed concerns with the applicant's proposed business structure in which the retail area would be rented by a tenant rather than common ownership of the, of the retail and co-working space as was required in 2021. Some commissioners also questioned whether the proposed co-working space, use was consistent with the purpose of the C1 district to promote a walkable retail environment. After reviewing the request, commissioners voted six to one to recommend approval of the application with conditions. Among the conditions are requirements for the retail, our requirements for the retail are to be fully stocked and accessible to the public for regular business hours and approving the special use for one entity that will operate both co-working and retail elements of the business. Staff and village attorney have incorporated the plan commission conditions into the attached ordinance. The, the plan commission recommends approval of the proposed special use, site plan and design review permit with conditions. I move to approve, uh, let's see, an ordinance approving a special use permit, site plan and design review permit to authorize co-working in conjunction with retail sales in the C1 district at 30 South LaGrange Road.
Second.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien and trustee Gale. I'd like to jump in, uh, if I may, and, and say, I do have, uh, serious concerns about this. I would like and would recommend that it be sent back to the plan commission, uh, for further deliberations. I would like to see the plan commission thoroughly deliberate, um, really our standards for special use and to make sure that this use is really appropriate for that. I have significant concerns regarding the viability of the commercial use space. I have concerns that the plan commission didn't adequately consider the residents that spoke at the meeting. And I also, uh, with the recent plan passing of the comprehensive plan, where we again reinforced the desire for commercial space on, on the first floor. I'm, I'm very concerned with the, uh, proposal in this case. So at this time, I would ask if any trustee would join me, uh, in, because I can't make the motion, making a motion to amend, uh, the motion, I think it's, would it be a motion to amend or a new motion? To send it back to, to remand it to the plan commission?
Oh, it would be, you can do it as a, a motion to amend.
So a motion to amend the motion on the floor and to send it back to the plan commission.
I move to amend the motion on the floor and move to send the application back to the plan commission.
A second.
A second for trustee McGee. Thank you, trustee Peterson. With that, can we discuss both or the whole thing in a one discussion?
So the, so the motion is whether to remand, uh, back. So I think first would be the, uh, vote to amend the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
And then you would be debating if that passes, you'd be debating whether or not you should remand it back.
Okay. So can we have a discussion?
Actually, you can, sorry, you can discuss before you actually do the vote.
So we can discuss just pretty openly?
Yes.
Okay. And then, then we can have, depending on how the discussion goes, uh, we, we can, we can have a vote, I guess, either way on the amending. Uh, and then what's necessary depending on how that goes. And that would need four favorable votes.
Correct.
Okay. With, with that being said, any comments? Just, attorney Chuster, please.
Before we start debating, there was one other comment that I, I wanted to make, which is we heard from the owner of Sweet Spot and their, and their, and her concerns about competition in the marketplace. And I do not want to minimize, uh, those concerns and I think they are legitimate, and they may be very legitimate concerns. But I want to caution, uh, this, this board in terms of we are focused on the factors of the special use, one of which is not impact the competition in the marketplace. You know, simply put, when we hear an application, we aren't deciding between winners and losers how to preserve current businesses if there's more competition. Instead, it's based on the impact of the business on, you know, on your zoning standards, you know, and, um, you know, and again, not to diminish at all those concerns, but that is something I would urge you to, um, to be careful about when you're considering what, how you, how you feel about the application.
Fair enough. Thank you. Any trustees with comments, questions, concerns on this matter? Trustee Peterson.
Thank you, President Cookler. My concerns are with the retail, uh, space. I guess it, uh, the acqui, you're gonna have to help me with the pronunciation of that again?
Assai.
Assai bowls. I'm reading that they are, are currently in existence at farmer's markets. And it's the middle of January, so there aren't any farmer's markets in the area. So I need, I would like to see more information on the viability of that. And I also have some concerns that there are proposed tables with some chairs, which means, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that would require restrooms for, for public use. If there's a window and the public, and if there are tables, which mean people can go into the space and sit and have their lunch, then that would require restrooms. And I'm not seeing, or that is not being addressed at all. I'm, I have some profound concerns about how the retail space is planned and I'd like more detail about that.
Thank, thank you, trustee Peterson. Trustee Augustine.
Trustee Peterson, that's a good point. And maybe staff can answer just quickly. Is there a bathroom accessible or is that?
So the bathrooms would most likely need to be shared with the co-working space.
I have a few concerns, um, again, regarding this exception to allow retail. When this first came to this board, it was a retail space selling, I think, unique Illinois-produced, made, uh, items, uh, by smaller companies, maybe some local. And I, I loved the idea. And it wasn't a restaurant, but it was a retail and it would maybe be easier to manage. I can't remember if that one had someone dedicated to the store or not, but what concerns me here, and maybe I'm wrong, is it sounds like there's no one dedicated to this. This is self-serve. Is that correct?
The condition that's in the proposed ordinance is that it would have to be staffed with a dedicated employee, the retail area.
Okay. So there would be someone who would have to be there for the eight hours a day that we're asking, six days a week. That would be someone who's in the back, that'd be someone who's sitting up front helping the customer. Okay.
Yeah, that would, that would be up to this board, but it's drafted.
Right, it's drafted.
That, that condition is in there that they'd have to have a dedicated staff member who does the retail.
Okay. It feels like, um, this is taking down, almost taking advantage of the exception that we'd be making. And, um, that concerns me. Again, years ago, not, not because of the competition aspect, but there was only one co-working in town. We were coming out of COVID. It seemed like a great idea. I think we were willing to make some exceptions, uh, in light of the climate we were under. Now here we are, they're finally getting around to hopefully doing the, the rest of the build and they're changing the concept. I may have missed why that's happening, but it seems to me to be the least that they can do to satisfy this unique retail condition. And it's almost like, how do we get around this? How do we get around this problem? How do we minimize it? It just doesn't feel like true retail. And that's a, it's a pretty primo spot on LaGrange Road. It's a lovely facade. There's a lot of foot traffic there and a lot of focus there. And, you know, it's not gonna be open super early, it's not gonna be open super late and it won't probably scream retail. I just wonder if this is the least that they can do. And my concern is that it's, without some of the other conditions, if this fails, then we're supposed to possibly close down the co-working space. And that seems extreme, but that's quite possible. So I'd like to hear a little bit more possibly from the applicant about, and maybe we can't ask those questions, I don't know, but the viability of a business like this. It doesn't seem to me to be as, um, appealing as what we all voted to approve four years
I'm not sure, Ben, are we, is trustee Augustine asking the applicant to speak and is that?
I mean, that would, that would be up to you as, as, as the chair of this, if you would like them to speak. I mean, ultimately, there's the motion that is on the floor is whether we should amend the motion to and take a vote on the remanding of the matter. But how far you want to entertain questions, that would be up to you.
If trustee Augustine wants somebody to speak, I'm, I'm fine with having that happen.
You know, as long as that question gets addressed somewhere along the line, it doesn't.
Well, I, it, it, again, if you want somebody to speak tonight, I'm, I'm fine with that. If, if you're saying, I, I'm comfortable voting no, instead of sending it back to the plan commission, I'm personally fine with that also. So I'm kinda, if you're saying, I, I'm voting yes on this, I'd say, I hope I can convince trustees to at least send it to the plan commission. So that's my, that's my feeling. So again, it's your request. You have to tell me if you want me to ask the applicant to come and answer your questions.
Can we first see what the rest? Can we first see what the rest of the trustees have to say?
Sure.
If there's a few more questions and see how we feel after that point?
Sure. Any other trustee Thompson?
So, and I was at the planning commission meeting when this, this was heard, and the applicant is in the back of the room, in fact, all parties, the retail space. And I think it would be, it would be helpful if they did come forward, explain what the retail is, because I don't think the way this was packaged for us to understand what the retail is has been very clear, and they could explain it better. I said, and I, and we had spoken about this, I would like to see this somehow be separated. Right now, it is written that if the retail place stops, the shared office space closes immediately. We send Kurt over and shut the building down, they throw all their tenants out. To me, that's not fair to a shared office space. So if we're going to put into, if we're going to send this back to the planning commission and redesign the retail aspect, I think we should break the, if they're going to give up more space to retail on the first floor, it should be broken away. They're just a landlord, not responsible for the downstairs tenant being maintained, because we got them tied, they, the, so we need to understand what happened to the original idea for the, the retail space and what is the new retail space. Trustee Peterson had a question on it, so I would like for them to explain it just so we understand better. And then also ask them questions about, my concern is the retail space in the front is very small, and should this asahi bowl business fail, what else could move into that space? Because to me, you lose your, you lose your retail tenant, and you have to shut your doors immediately. You're not going to be a shared office space long, so how do you change that? So I would like for them to kind of explain that.
Okay. Um, trustee, attorney Schuster?
Just for clarification, so the way our code works is that coworking without the retail is not permitted.
On the first floor.
On the first floor. So it's not, it's not a permitted use, it's not a special use. And so the issue is, if the retail were to go away, they'd be non-compliant with the code. Now, there would be a due process, process in which we cite them, and we can take action to revoke, uh, the special use, and there would be a, a hearing process that would play out. It's not as if it, you know, we think it's closed, and literally tomorrow, um, their door is shut, but there, but it would be, but understand that if the, if the retail goes away, you know, it is a unpermitted use in the zoning district. And, and so it would have to be filled pretty much immediately to be in compliance with our code.
Well, following up on that, with our adjudication, is that something we could fine them for if they remained open without a retail space?
So they could be fined. Um, that, that is one, one of the remedies, but the, but understand it would be, at what point would the village want to take more action to make sure that the special use is revoked? Because they, whether or not they paid each and every day a fine, doesn't solve the problem of making them somehow an allowed use. There has to be a retail under our code.
Right. Under our code, there cannot not be a retail.
Right, for the first floor, right.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure if that answers your question, trustee Thompson, or not, as far as why it was connected, or if there's, if, charity, if you have any more insight, was there some positives?
I can just relay another thing that was discussed at the Plan Commission hearing, which was that our other uses that we have in the downtown, in the core of the C1, that are allowed, that are a sort of a blended concept of service and retail. For example, our personal physical fitness facilities, our commercial food preparation area kitchens, the shared commercial kitchens, those are all single entities. So it's not a, a personal physical fitness studio renting their retail space to another entity, it's all one business. So that ultimately, there is one entity to hold accountable if for some reason that retail weren't functioning as it's intended or required to be.
Thank you. Does that, trustee Thompson answer some of your questions? Okay. Is trustee Gail?
Thanks, Mr. President. I mean, I, I think this, this needs to go back to the Plan Commission. I think they need to first, one of the things they need to do is answer, like, how small is too small? Right? We kind of, my recollection of the history of this is we kind of like squinted our eyes and cocked our heads and said, okay, you know, they can put retail, you know, a smaller retail space on the first floor, but it was, you know, and it's, it's in our packet, too. I mean, it was also going to be open for coworking, or it's going to be, you know, it could expand for special events. Um, it was supposed to be about 500 square foot, and now they've shrunk it down to 400 square feet, which is a 20% reduction, which is not a de minimis kind of change. Um, you know, it, it just, it begs the Plan Commission to say, how small is no longer compliant with, you know, the, the intent of our, of our code? You know, and this was going to be, my, my memory of it is similar to trustee Augustine's, it was going to be a snack shop, it was going to be open, you know, open to the public. This seems like it's just a walk-up, grab-and-go, and it doesn't strike me as keeping with the, the purposes of our, of our comprehensive plan. Um, you know, and so it just, at some point, it's just too small, and that's what I want the Plan Commission to really hack out. And I think all the questions we've got is really, that's where they should do the work.
I, I agree with you.
That's my, that's my thought.
Any other comments? Okay, back to you, trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. Uh, I also worry, I mean, you know, how will, this, this business will make their money on the coworking, you know, so the retail isn't going to make or break the business. So without having access to the books, how, you know, wouldn't it be, I mean, I'm just hypothetical here, but, you know, they're not going to let this business fail, right? So even if they get no foot traffic, might it, might it be able to survive? And then it's, again, not fulfilling the, um, uh, the mission of what we're trying to allow for here. So I thought, I thought the unique products shop retailer in the original proposal was great, it was really neat. I was looking forward to looking at some of those new products, this, I'm just concerned, I'm just concerned that it will even matter to them whether they make a lot on this or not. There's not a lot of sunk costs to, to get it up and running, so it won't take much to keep it profitable. And, you know, maybe that shouldn't matter in these decisions, but, you know, we're trying to create foot traffic, not allow first floor coworking, but to allow that first floor coworking, then we want some, some products sold. So, you know, I'm in a real, you know, I really do. And, you know, it's, it's crazy, because this was recommended fully from the Plan Commission. They kicked these tires, they talked it through, but they're also looking at it from the, from the perspective of what they did the first time, and trying to make sure it still kind of checks the boxes. And so I, you know, we need to help them know what they should be looking at to then reevaluate and send it back to us.
I, I agree with everything you said. To me, it's, it's not a harder question. I, I think exactly that this is, you know, as trustee Gail said, I, I remember when it came up, really having to squint and say, okay, you know, in, in this time of the year with, with where COVID was and retail and, and things like that, to me, it's a much different time than it is now. I would be expecting this use to be going the other way and saying, we want more commercial space than less commercial space. To me, moving down on commercial space would be, if I was serving on the Plan Commission, an absolute no, that's not what this village is looking for. I did read the Plan, and I know trustee Thompson was there, I did review some of their notes, and I, and I know that at least one of the commissioners said, well, isn't this something that the board should be deciding? And again, um, I think it's, I'm comfortable in saying, when we allowed for shared office space, really any office space on that first floor, it, to me, it was under very limited circumstances, and we're not, this use isn't even coming close to, to approaching what I would expect to be that limited circumstance. So with that, are we comfortable sending it back to the board now, or does a trustee want to hear from the applicants before we do that? Trustee Augustine?
I would say, I would like to hear from the applicant if they thought they could correct what we're, what we're saying, you know, if they could, if they have a different take on what maybe we're misunderstanding. And if not, I think then they go back to the drawing boards with the Plan Commission and look at a different...
So you would invite them to speak?
If they thought that tonight they could change our minds and not send it back through this longer process, that would be the only reason I would say, you know, give them a chance there, but I don't, I don't see it, I don't, it does seem to me like we're seeing what we're seeing here.
I, I believe I'm seeing what I'm seeing, but again, I, I just want to know if a trustee wants to invite the applicant up to speak.
I would do so, yeah, if they'd like to. There could be no downside.
At this time, I would ask if any of the applicants would like to speak, they could speak. Thanks. If you could just introduce yourself and your relationship to this project.
There we go.
So that was Andrew Nash, brick and mortar.
Andrew Nash, brick and mortar.
Thanks.
You're welcome. I appreciate all the feedback. Uh, I guess I'll give you the timeline of how we got here, and just for some clarity, so we're all on the same page, whether this goes back or gets approved, at least we all are, uh, on the same page. So, uh, yep, 2021 was when the building was acquired. 2022, uh, after, obviously, the special use permit had been approved. At that point, interest rates started going up. 2023, right, so construction financing became extremely challenging to secure, and that was the reason for the delay. Uh, that being said, along the way, myself, Adam, my business partner, and then Boa, the asahi fellows over here, uh, so we met them at a farmer's market, and, uh, full transparency, I was there with my, uh, my wife and three daughters, and my wife does not like asahi, and my three daughters didn't even know what it was. And, uh, I knew what it was, I, so let's go over here and try it. Uh, I got one, and then they tried it, and then they ate all of it. And so we go to the farmer's market weekly, there's an icy truck there, my girls would always have the icies, they're like the first ones in line at 7:00 AM, which is early for Saturday. Uh, but all that being said, they started just skipping that and going straight to, to Boa, the, to grab their asahi bowls. So we, as a family, every Saturday, we'd have asahi bowls, my wife included, and she's, if she was here right now, she would say the exact same thing, I, I do not like asahi, I do love their asahi bowls. And so we started having a conversation, and I said, man, I said, huh, you guys do a great job, you guys have obviously thought this through, they have a very professional tent that takes into consideration bugs, et cetera. So they had had problems and had overcome them, it was obvious. And I said, how many farmer's markets do you guys add, if you don't mind me asking? I was expecting to hear two or three, and they're at 11. So, okay, you guys are on to something. I said, what, what are your plans for next year? And they said, well, actually, uh, we're going into more farmer's markets next year. And I asked them where. One of them was, uh, LaGrange, the LaGrange Farmer's Market, the LaGrange Business Association invited them to the LaGrange Farmer's Market, which is this coming summer. I said, no kidding? I said, well, how, how many storefronts do you have? And they said, well, we're actually looking to get into storefronts, uh, we have clientele all over the Chicagoland area that's looking for that, and we could ask for that on a consistent basis. So, wow, this is interesting, because it's a, it's a, they literally are able to run a extreme, they're the most successful business at the farmer's market, there's a line around the, around the, through the, through the walkway. And, and so they, and they're doing all of this out of a 10 by 10 space. And so this is interesting, I said, because, uh, we in LaGrange have a building that we were, we were looking to do X concept, but your concept would be very interesting because it's, it's quiet in nature, which is, which is good for coworking, plus it's, uh, it would bring the clientele and the public by the building. And so they, because what they, what they've, and the reason for the walk-up window, is that their customers are accustomed to standing, ordering, waiting, hanging out, and it is a lot during the, the nicer climates that they're outside, maybe in the restaurant, and then they could also leverage the coworking spaces for birthday parties and special events, et cetera, uh, for their, for their customers. So it wound up being, from our vantage point, a very collaborative opportunity here. And so we talked with them, went through the space, they loved it, they said, wow, this would be amazing. And so that's where that collaboration started. Uh, in terms of work, uh, and I, and I appreciate you coming to speak, uh, listen, since 2014, work has changed significantly. Uh, since 2020, work has changed significantly. And for us, uh, what we've seen in our spaces, which we've got, we're operational in, in Park Ridge, Deerfield, and Glen Ellen, and then we have, uh, we're under construction Libertyville and Arlington Heights, is that people are looking for today experiences, right, and they're looking for flexibility. And so what we're giving them is that experiential aspect of work and inspiring space. And our folks are, are driving further, and so this potentially is, is helpful, uh, the fact that our clientele is coming from 25 minutes, up to 25 minutes away, sometimes further, but on average, it's 20, it's a 25-minute radius. Uh, and for us, we're, it's very leaned into meeting spaces, so it's, it's collaboration, yes, people have home offices. But one, they don't like, they don't like being there five days a week, and two, they're not taking meetings in their home offices. And so we've added, uh, from the first, from the first proposal to today, we've, so we have a conference room, a boardroom, which seats up to 16 people, and then two huddle rooms. And so these are more collaborative spaces, which also open up to businesses in the area who need more event space. And so we have partnerships going on at our different locations with businesses, local businesses, for them to be able to utilize that. So restaurants who don't have enough space or who are overbooked for private events are then turning to us to be able to utilize those spaces. So those become, uh, ever-growing in importance. Yes, the space did shrink some, and for us, that was just in line with the code and what was being allowed, and that's what's, what need, what's needed for the business. Plus, that allows for the mailboxes, so the, the virtual offices, which are people enjoying mailboxes, they've grown in popularity that we're adding more in our spaces, and so we wanted to make sure that we had enough for the community. Uh, I think I missed maybe one of the questions that you might have had? Would you mind that I touch on?
I'm not sure, you know, you're just kind of generally explaining the business, and so that's how I'm listening to it. I mean, I think we had talked about, we had asked about bathrooms and, um, product and the shift, but why, you know?
Yeah, and then the product is, so again, product was, the shift to asahi was because, and, and one of this, one of the points was that, uh, that there might be, putting a goose egg on the board for the asahi, uh, business would be something that we'd be okay with. Uh, so we're clear, right, there's, there's operators attached to that, and so those operators, I promise you, these guys would not, uh, would not be okay with just seeing a goose egg, right? So they're going to be promoting that. And so there's duality in terms of promotion to be able to gain more traction, more visibility. Uh, again, we're thrilled with the fact that this is a high-profile location, that we can make something amazing happen here. And if you go and look at any of our other locations, these are premium coworking spaces with a significant amount of, uh, thought put into them from an aesthetic perspective, from a, uh, overall function perspective, design, uh, acoustics, there's a lot that goes into these spaces to make them. And what we're seeing in these other cities is that they are truly becoming that business hub. And there are other coworking spaces, Park Ridge is a great example, there's multiple coworking spaces within Park Ridge, there's multiple in Glen Ellen, uh, there's multiple in Deerfield. So all of their, they're, these are growing in popularity because of the state of where we're all at. And so we're obviously very confident that, uh, this will be successful, yas, restaurant will be successful, it will be successful collaboratively, and, uh, it'll be a, a great addition to the neighborhood.
Um, yeah, I just want to be clear where, where I'm standing, sitting, and, and my thoughts. I have no doubt that you, you can be successful. My problem is, we don't want, as a board, as our comprehensive plan, offices on our first floor in our central business district. We don't want it. We don't want it. So, we, again, in 2021, allowed it, because there's this factor and that factor, and we really thought we were kind of doing our best for you. We vote that, and since then, there hasn't been a lot of communication on your side. There hasn't been any effort to keep the building nice while you were looking for finance. There was nothing. So, that's problematic, I think. Again, if you came and said, we really need first-floor shared office, for whatever reason. I personally share office on a 34th floor, so I'm not exactly sure why you need first-floor shared office. But if you made that argument and met with me, I'd be happy to say, we just, we have office spaces. We have first-floor office spaces, just not in our central business district. You got a great concept. Let's talk about other areas that you can go. Again, this is our first-floor central business district. If you were saying, hey, this market, this store, this restaurant, is just going to knock it out of the park. Again, eating in the summer, when you can stand and eat your food outside, is one thing. Doing it tomorrow, when it's zero degrees outside, is a little more difficult. You know, if you were coming to us and saying, hey, we found these great operators. They're going to knock it out of the park, but they need 50% of the first floor, or even better, they need all the first floor. We'd be 100% behind you. It's not that we don't want your second story to be successful. It's not that we don't want your restaurant on the first floor to be successful. It's that we don't want shared office on the first floor in the central business district. And I'm not hearing where that, you know, putting mailboxes in on the first floor, that's not moving me towards what we're trying to accomplish. It may be very profitable for you, and maybe a lot of demand, but that's not moving me towards what we should be looking for on this special use. So, I just want to make it clear. Nothing to do with whether you're successful in other towns and things like that. I don't know if you're located in their central business district, if they have the same concerns. Perhaps they don't have concerns about office space on the first floor. Or maybe they made a special use for you, and they're happy. I just really don't know.
They did. So, but you brought up, they all had the same concerns, and they all, we had to go through this same process in order to navigate the special use. For us, the reason that the first floor is important is because it's important to the customers. And in turn, that's important to the people of the community, right? So, it's not a, it's not a, we're pursuing it because we like it and people are not enjoying it, mentioning it, frequenting our spaces because of it, right? Here's what's happening, is Starbucks, coffee shops in general are, so I'll use Starbucks as the example, right? They've realized that their most profitable model is a drive-through model. And I don't, I haven't been to this one over here, but I can tell you, in the majority of Starbucks that I've gone into, maybe you've seen this too, they're pulling out their outlets. Others, other quick grab-and-go locations are pulling out their seats, right? They don't want people working there. And so, what you have to ask yourself is, or what we've asked ourselves, you don't have to ask yourself anything. What we've asked ourselves is, why is that, right? Did Starbucks, did people all of a sudden not want to work at coffee shops? Or did Starbucks just not want people working there and sitting there all day? And that's what, and the latter is what's becoming the case, is Starbucks doesn't want people sitting there. Now, the flip side is that people still need a place to work, right? And so, what we've seen is that people are working wherever else they can figure out, whether it's the library, the gym, significant other places, right? It's the reason that in Glen Ellen, our collaboration with BlackBerry Market is being so successful, is because they have lots of customers who will buy a coffee, buy some food, and they come in, and they sit there and take up tables all day. BlackBerry loves their customers, and they do a tremendous job. And what we're doing there is BlackBerry is actually helping us transition those folks to brick and mortar, and they're offering complimentary delivery. So, you can literally go on BlackBerry, you can do this right now, you can go on BlackBerry, and go place an order, and it would be delivered to brick and mortar. And they run that over, they have the electronic access, it's all set up. And they're very excited for the same opportunity here, right? They're expanding, obviously, here, the similar footprint that they have in Glen Ellen. And they're excited, because there's a distinction, and they're seeing this. There's a distinction between where do people want to work and are willing to work, that's not a coffee shop, and the fact that they don't necessarily want people working in their coffee shop. And so, and in this day and age, there is going to be, and our belief is, and we're seeing this come true, is that there's, right? Just like people have their Netflix memberships, people have their gym memberships, people have their coworking memberships. And so, and our folks love the fact that they're able to come in, it feels like a coffee shop. They come in, it's like a hotel coffee shop-type entrance, they're blown away by the aesthetic, it's on the first floor, it's easy access, and they're able to utilize that, so that would be one. Yes, these operators are phenomenal. No, they don't need the full footprint. But that being said, that's why these buildings in these suburban downtowns, and even downtown, are available, right? Is that 4,500 to 10,000 square foot buildings just aren't desirable. Or what we've seen is they're much less desirable, and spend the market for a significant amount of time, and there's data to prove this, because retailers and restaurants don't need that much square footage, right? They're downsizing their footprints, leaving vacancies in these, in these areas, which then allow us to be able to put our concept in there and make great use of amazing real estate, make a city happy. And we're also, we're not a competitor to those surrounding restaurants or retailers. In fact, we're the opposite. We complement, we partner with all of them, and we have means of when people come into town, right? And this becomes a gathering place, so folks from out of town are flying in, and they need to take a meeting. Where are they doing that? They're looking for meeting spaces. What people love is the fact that they don't have to go to a hotel, pay for internet, pay for coffee, pay for parking, et cetera, et cetera. They can come in, pay their hourly rate, have easy access, have their meeting, and they're able to do that, and then frequent the local surrounding areas. So, nonstop, there's a site called Peer Space, P-E-R Space, so Peer Space. Peer Space, you can go on there and look up events, you can look at meeting rooms, et cetera. It's like Airbnb for meeting rooms, let's put it that way. And so, we have a ton of folks who are coming from out of town, from around other areas, who are looking for a central location, right? So, I'll just use Park Ridge as an example, right? You've got someone coming from Anniaki, someone coming from the city, and Park Ridge winds up being that meeting place. Same thing in Deerfield, there's similar aspects. And so, Glen Ellen, people are finding these meeting spaces, and they're enjoying that, and then, they're asking us, right? Hey, Brick and Mortar, I'm going to be in the area. Where do I go for food? Where do I go for this? Where do I go for that? And we're able to recommend, obviously, all the favorites in the area. And so, because of that, again, first floor is super important. These operators are awesome. They have a great concept. In the winter months, they do delivery, so they're delivering to all of their customers. In the winter months, these large, I don't want to misspeak, three gallon, gallon, one gallon, one gallon acai. And so, they, you can go on their Instagram, they're doing this all the time. And in the winter months, they would do that and be able to do that out of their store. So, it would, again, be a very vibrant concept in the middle of town. But I do understand your concerns.
Any other questions?
Thank you, President Kukler, and thank you for making your case. It's good to hear. But you're also making the case for almost any other business that would love primary real estate on La Grange Road. It's got great visibility, you know, it's wonderful, and it's one of the reasons why you want to be there. And as President Kukler said, there are other places in town where you could set up shop without these requirements at all. But, you know, a real estate, a law firm, they would love to have your space, where you are, as much as you do, for the very same reasons. So, it's not really, you're not really making a case for what our concern is. And our concern is retail, retail revenue, foot traffic, people seeing this village as a village that has places to shop and go into. So, that's what we're looking at in a very small area of our town. And we have held out, you know, we have talked about changing these rules, and we've bent them here and there when we see good exceptions. But we've, we've, we've got businesses and spaces that have been vacant for a while, and they're wonderful. And they held out. We've got a bridal store across the street. We've got a barber shop that went in a year ago. We've got an ice cream place going in down the street, all on La Grange Road. Those are retail spaces, and that's what we're looking for. And sometimes those landlords have to hold out to get the right fit in that space, but I'm just not hearing the argument for retail. And that's really what we want, and selling one product is very different than what we all thought, you know, I think we were going to get, so that is my concern.
Thank you, trustee Augustine. Any other trustee comments, questions?
Do you have a question?
Okay. At this time, again, the matter that we'll be voting on, at least initially, is to send back the matter to the Plan Commission.
Right, so the first vote would be to amend the motion.
So, we're voting now to amend the motion to send it back to the Plan Commission.
Right, and if that passes, then you would take the vote.
Got it.
To amend it back.
So, again, we're just voting right now to amend the motion. If, with that knowledge, if Clerk Saladino can call a roll call vote.
Trustee Yale?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
And trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Okay, the motion to amend passes unanimously. Now, we are going to vote on that motion, which is to send this matter back to the Plan Commission.
If you could call a roll call vote. Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee Yale?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. With that, it'll be sent back to the Plan Commission. Moving on, I believe we are done with current business. And so, I would ask if there's any public comments regarding matters not on tonight's agenda.
So, Becky Lorenson from Community Diversity Group, and I just wanted to thank President Kukler for announcing the Fifth Annual Building-Inclusive Community Conference. And I'll be sure and get a flyer to you, so you can post it, and just, it's a number of organizations working together, the schools, the Park District, and so on. And a wonderful opportunity to meet our fellow community people. Thank you.
Thank you. We do appreciate all your efforts.
My name is John Pluto. I live at 718 East Avenue. We have some problems, and they started two months ago. And do you know what those problems are?
It's not going to be a question and answer. You got a couple of minutes to say what you want to say.
Oh, I got a couple, I have a couple of minutes. That's what you're going to tell me?
Well, the rule is generally three. How much time do you want?
How much time did all of these people spend? You're going to cut my legs off?
How much time do you want?
I'll take, I'll read the rest of the zoning code for you, if you want.
Well, sir, if you're going to be reasonable, I'll be happy to be reasonable.
Title and purposes. This document shall be known and referred to as the La Grange Zoning Code. You want me to go through every article of it?
I would prefer you not to. I would prefer you to treat me with respect, and I'll try to do the same.
Well, then, don't cut my legs off.
Sir, if you could tell me how much time you want.
You see, you see what I brought, okay? We got a problem on 49th Street.
Okay.
Okay, we had police protection there for about two weeks, and we got nothing now, okay? I walk down that street every day. I haven't seen a police officer there in weeks, okay? This all gets forgotten about, okay? Now, for public infrastructure, the purpose of this code, code related to public infrastructures are to protect and enhance pattern of interconnected streets and highways that is unified, integrated, safe, effective, and efficient. Regulate use along all arterial streets and highways and protect their through-traffic function and capacity. Protect residential, residential streets from degradation by non-residential traffic, okay? This is what I'm talking about. We got two months into this thing, and we're no further ahead than where we were when we started, okay? The cars are flying down that street at 40 miles an hour. For one thing, there is no, there is no speed limit sign when you turn off of East Avenue on the 49th Street, all the way to La Grange Road. There is not, except for the school zone. That's 20 miles an hour. My recommendation is that you get a speed limit sign right by that park at 20 miles per hour. We got three months till baseball season starts, and then, it gets really chaotic there. We also, when you come off of La Grange Road on the 49th Street, there's a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign right, right there. 100 feet later, there's a 20 mile an hour speed limit sign for the school zone that goes all the way past 8th Avenue. Well, my recommendation is that that whole street be 20 miles an hour. And I don't know what that's going to take to do that. But I can't ask that question, because you won't answer it. But, the school zone, you hit one sign that says 25 miles per hour, 100 feet later, you got 100 foot from La Grange Road to the, it doesn't make any sense. We need signage from westbound to tell a speed limit. We don't have that. We also probably should look to seeing Mr. Wu and ask him to supply a solar-powered stop sign at 49th and 10th Avenue, because nobody stops for that stop sign. Now, I don't know what it's going to take to get this problem fixed. You see those signs right there? I got that from the village where my son lives. They give them out to their residents. And I think it's a great idea. I think that what you, you people, as a group, should do is buy a couple hundred of these things and give them to all the people that live on 10th Avenue and 9th Avenue. Because I look at that sign, and I think about my kids. And nobody thinks about us up there, because these cars are flying down that street. I go across the street at 10th Avenue, and FedEx trucks are practically running me over. Now, there's not one weight limit sign on our, on our streets. You go into countryside, four tons. That means anything up to a C plate, anything over a D plate is illegal. Why don't we put four-ton limits on those streets, so that we get all the truck traffic that's running through there? We got ATD tires, we have, FedEx is running their big box trucks through that are, that are running F plates. What's going on here? Are we going to create safety, a safe environment for our residents? Can I expect to hear anything on this?
Are you done?
Yeah, no, I'm not, because you know why? I talked with Mr. Wu again, and I talked with Brian Roberts from the Department of Transportation. And you know what? They're not going to close down Plainfield Road, northbound East Avenue. That ain't happening. So, I guess what we do is we do nothing, which is really sad. And when somebody gets hurt there, it's your guy's responsibility. But if I was you, I'd be thinking about buying these signs and having the homeowners on those side streets put those signs up in front of their houses.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wilson Penn. I am resident at 534 South 10th Avenue. I don't mean to be redundant, but I'm speaking on the same topic in regards to the construction at 47th and East Ave. I last attended a meeting in November to communicate concerns about the construction traffic in the Sedgwick neighborhood. And that's, again, why I'm here tonight. And that's, again, why I'm here tonight. Again, just to kind of restate, just for everyone's awareness, we continue to see heavy commercial traffic daily. These are semi-trucks. FedEx is a big culprit of that, beyond just the, the box delivery trucks, like true semi-trucks are coming through. I understand there's been additional signage that does not seem to address the, the issue. In addition to that, routinely speeding cars, again, folks are detouring through our residential neighborhood between a park and a school. You know, after the last meeting I attended, there was an improved police presence. We do appreciate that. Spoke to an officer at the time, told me that they had written 80 tickets in one week on 10th Ave alone, which objectively tells me that there's a speeding problem in that area. However, that police presence has stopped. So again, just the issue continues with respect to the, the pass-through traffic. You know, I understand that this may be overlooked now in the winter season, but as stated, with spring on the horizon, Little League in full swing, just a high level of concern with respect to the traffic proximity to park. It was stated earlier tonight that the board values public safety and this just seems to be right in line with that. As I wrap up here, you know, I, I've continually cited concerns to the village, to IDOT. I know I've emailed a few of you, thank you for your responses there. I've also emailed the county. And it just, there's a lot of finger pointing going on in terms of who ultimately has the say in this decision. And so this is a two-year project and just urge the board to consider the duration of the current detour. And ultimately, I came here tonight kind of with one question because it's not, you know, fun to continue to, to be a nuisance. And I haven't been able to get a straight answer. And I guess my question is, is the village still advocating to stop traffic at Plainfield? And if so, who's the best authority to, to direct those concerns to? If, if there's an answer, I would appreciate that.
I'm not sure if staff's able to, to answer that. I, I know that we can't stop the traffic. Obviously, it's IDOT, and IDOT's the only one that can do it. Is there any more that we can add to that?
Just that, as you're probably well aware, Plainfield Road there is a county jurisdiction. So we do meet, we actually have a meeting planned for this week to discuss some of the patterns there. So I appreciate your commentary, that'll be helpful in, in that meeting and, and helping to address these concerns.
Thank you all. And just the last comment on that, as you meet with, with the county. Again, IDOT's press release initially did indicate that all northbound east traffic would be stopped at, at 55th, and it's currently being permitted up to 49th. But with that, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. And, and if there's a way that we can get it stopped, we'll continue to advocate for
Hi, everyone. Laura West at 1:40 Sunset. I'll be quick and I know it's not a back and forth, so happy to follow up later. But two questions, I want to just, I know there's probably a lot of behind-the-scenes work and other things happening, but wanted to check in on the proposed flooding mitigation project in the LT Westfield for north of 47th issues and see if things are still moving forward with momentum and positive signs. And would appreciate any update on timeline and if there's anything else I can be doing to advocate further, provide more information, or beg and plead and desperately hope that this project goes through sometime in the future, please let me know. And then, secondly, part of the engineer's report when addressing that the outlet was an open sewage relief point in Sunset now, they mentioned that there should be none of those, that should not be the case in this corner. That was put in about 10 years ago without a lot of hoopla or approval or whatnot. I'm wondering if Public Works can revisit the open sewage relief point in the corner. Maybe in the meantime, while we're waiting for some of these other things and possibly just return it to the closed one that it was. So maybe that's something that we can look into or revisit while some of these other discussions are happening. But happy, of course, offline follow-up later, I understand.
Well, thank you, Mrs. West, for coming out. We are hoping to have very good news very shortly, maybe even next meeting. So we are, we are moving and there is a lot of momentum behind the scenes. So hopefully, we'll be able to announce something.
Thank you very much. And any, I mean, Russell, we can talk later, but, or Director.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it and we'll adjust it as according. We'll, we'll take a look at it and I think you're asking them to take their open layers off for closed layers in, right?
Yeah, it used to be closed, now it's open and sewage, like a geyser, is just gracing our corner whenever it rains, which then is just covering everything and, of course, sewage, which did not happen before. So it's, you know, something we've talked about. I know there's a full desire to, you know, take all the engineer's recommendations and I, I understand, I agree with it. I just was wondering if that's something that could be looked at in the meantime while we're maybe kind of awaiting some of the very larger scale portions of this initiative.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Thanks.
We'll take care of it.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I would ask if there's any trustee comments. Trustee Augustine?
Thank you, President Kukler. Two quick things, both from residents. One was, and some of this was on Facebook, residents love the holiday lights that have been put up, they love them. And the question was, can they stay up a little longer? I mean, they're up now, I don't know, didn't they have the information to answer whether they, what the duration was expected to be, but if it doesn't cost too much?
They stay up till the end of Restaurant Week.
Okay. Is that, is that what we traditionally have done?
Yeah.
They could stay up longer or, you know, until, until it starts to get light out earlier, I guess, is the, was the, some of the comments?
Yeah, that's something we have to discuss, but usually after Restaurant Week, we usually turn them off. And we keep them in the trees and, because we don't go out for bid for another year or so, so we usually keep those same lights in for next year.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So possibility, keep them longer, but maybe they don't need that. Thought I'd ask. And the other thing was, and I think probably some of us, all of us got an email from a resident asking what, and I didn't see a reply all from staff, so I don't know if it's been answered, but asking if the, the morning start time for Flood Brothers garbage pickup could be adjusted to start a little bit later. My sense of it was they wouldn't have enough time in the day, but I wasn't sure because it coincides with people getting off to school and getting off to work. And this particular resident thought if we just moved it, instead of starting at seven, maybe starting at 8:30, could make, could make a difference. So I thought I would ask.
Yeah, I, I know staff responded to that email and said that they would look into see if there, that's a possibility, but as, as you can imagine, they trying to get it fit in is difficult.
So TBD or no?
We're currently waiting for a response.
Okay, great.
Any other trustee comments? We are going in a closed session, believe it or not. At this time, the Village Board intends to meet in closed session under the provisions of Illinois Open Meetings Act in Sections 2C1 to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, and under 2C21 to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Illinois Open Meetings Act. The Village will not reconvene to open session as no formal action will occur following the closed session. May have a motion and second to enter into closed session.
I move we enter into, oh, I move we enter into closed session?
Thank you, trustee Gale. A second.
Second.
Trustee Thompson, second. Thank you. Clerk Saladino, can you call a roll, please?
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee Gale?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. The Village will enter into closed session. It's, it's currently 9:54 and we'll do it as soon as possible downstairs. Thank you.